Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July Planning Commission meeting for Upper Chichester Township. I'd like to start the meeting with everyone standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George, if you can take role call.
Cindy Charney.
Here.
Chuck Lewis.
Here.
George.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June meeting?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, moving on to business, the first presentation we have is the 4800 Chichester Avenue. Whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay? Great. Rob Lewis from Capital Stewart, I represent. I'm sure. I don't know if you're back. Okay. I think we are last year, March, April, and since that time, we actually have done a number of things in meeting with your construction committee, and then we followed that up with a comprehensive resubmission of our plan set, responding to comments that came from the planning commission, but also the locals. So my plan was to walk the mission through a few of those plan changes that we made at the end of the question, but planning commission issued favorable recommendation to the mission for the rest of the project. So if I can just recap the property itself, as I know the planning commission, we're 9.68 acres own, IC industrial commercial, now proposal is for 105,000 warehouse. Would this be lovely to resolve? Oh, no. I can't do it right. So hitting on some things that have changed this last year. First one was our proposal with respect to the existing residence on property. Our proposal was pushing the flat structure impact, you know, proposed to continue to locate most of the residents, residents system, so to your one, and that is in the plan. And I also sent letter, my date to the 20th, of the achievement of that residence, describing the other detail of the proposal in general. How easy parking, accessibility to that structure, we will initially simply weatherproof that, make sure it doesn't cause a greater disrepair sitting there, but our intention is to try and use to fly up the tent. For that residence, so the hope is that that can ultimately be adopted this project. And so. Next item was request to, we look at the geometry, we're at intersections, Parkway, our traffic study will be to fire, reasons to the intersection, like we get the chair, planning commission among others, had asked us to take a look, see if there was any, and we were actually able to do that, and we went back, you know, see now, we actually had a three lane cross section, so we're actually, I guess it's four lanes total, but now there's three lanes, I can mean chosen Parkway, dedicated right, dedicated left, we dedicated two, which was the request, we were still able to modify, we were able to modify the turning radio, radio intersection, this is still accommodate traffic that we make is like turn, but this geometry is included. That necessitated us moving our driveways slightly actually over, is that. And which actually also sounds like we could shift our building slightly. So we were able to do that. Next item on our agenda was really general circulation, we had toyed with various configurations, we were trying to actually get rid of this access drive over here close to Summer's Lane, we had looked at plans with possibly make this way circulation, in the end, could not eliminate this drive aisle here, it was fired by fire marshal by certain portion of the building, what we have done is to try and limit, nearly eliminate traffic on that lot. First and foremost, we are including any truck traffic circulating building in this location, all truck traffic will have to stay on the east side of the building, circulate to the back, turn intersection, we also were able to retain two-way traffic through this parking lot, which we did fully use of the spaces, we'll be able to simply make same where they come in without having to go on, circuit all the way through, so we have minimized the amount of traffic that we utilize at the power line. Allow lots of the thousand. But that would be up to five. It's active. Along with that, there have been some comments about eventual conflicts, internal intersection, on-site, so we should have actually to pull the project back to have stacking this thing. Study stack site. Traffic. Next, we're asked to take a look at sound mitigation, the requirements has some describe level district, we will do that first and foremost, we have submitted study, that sound study, the operation of the warehouse facility, everything within internal with the ordinance standard, then also analyze the impact on place traffic, and it proves that this traffic is indeed actually required, in fact, that with the mitigation measures we have imposed, the actual building, while standard mitigation that has been proposed, we'll see actually plans. In addition to shifting the building slightly to east, we've been utilized photography that we do have, more or less created burning effect, all now top we want, the additions that burning and the fire plantings, we are now proposing meet with false contamination fence, not we know on the fire. Bobbing need that information, in that, maintain all the existing, you know, education on that property line, supplement. Our goal is not to simply have, hence being what the need to assume, we both to have some about inside. After we've. Instead, the sound study that we submitted, we to. Relative to send, but I have submitted to the township, my analysis of the ordinance, my analysis actually concludes that buildings on. Actually, we were asked, I think by planning commission, well, had new letters to submit elevations, using news of project, in various patients.
Can you go through some of these information?
I think that we had conversations had between our engineer and zoning officer earlier today, I believe the zoning officer's letters by the landscaping comment had to do with tree counts, we actually have the requirement with tree on land, this is definitely chart, we that letter is welcome by, and then the planning review is also actually about landscaping, making some suggestions, like move some of the trees over. Engineering letter, I believe that we had. At the outset of that, but the first comment, the land of all things, said that all components needed must be satisfied. We asked the rate, and would standard, particularly. Level. I'll describe this. This act requirement. Different air pollution thing, those are all things that we were asked from the city, and those are things that are properly addressed at a building permit stage, they are not, they can, I don't know. Noise, noise is the one that we were able to, a tenant. We had the condition of who will, that are required. that are required. Efficient, let's see, submit study. Next one. Far to our sound. Need that this comment we analyze our construction activity to demonstrate that our construction activity did comply with maximum decimal level. Set thinking ordinance, submit to the planning commission, that is another proper reading of your ordinance. And we better only for actually the gentleman. On the common exact any construction. You can see. That's double bus. Demonstrate that. There are two comments that I think are related, um, you know, traffic. Under general comment, I think they are linked, they have to do with Chelsea. The quest we, uh, throughout this process, we take a look at Chelsea Parkway. Consider either fun. We're doing conditions. We can, we can definitely say day, um, and if you are willing to generate history inside Chelsea Parkway. Look at get the sand to that. We commit to large improvement on Chelsea Parkway, uh, bombing system conditions. You're creating two, um, we have, as I said, out. Construction. We have a little bit of the beyond the route. From the you know, the link to to outside, to behind of there. We think it's worth noting, um, that Chelsea Parkway is scheduled to be completely redone. So it makes it even more challenging to agree to spend months in the place. Very future, anticipated to be again. Yeah, we continue to be willing to meet, uh, with the township, discuss it. But we're not going to remainder of the comments are relatively finer, they are by, one was, uh, obviously asked for we shared with the elevation, as I mentioned, they're divided with the submission, I'm sure they're loaded up, but we have to walk through them. Sorry. I messed you up. Oh, you. So this is a rendering showing our building. This is a view from at the western, western corner site. We're less than that. Behind, so go to some vegetation. Okay. Okay, great. So this is another view. Summer's Lane. Back. This confrontation with what that's rich of things. Why do we see the slopes that others I think solid. This is on there. A little bit elevated view. You shed obviously the side call, you can go different, different. So it was to fly, something a little bit less industrial in terms of your tones and things that nature, but it is, uh, building, building. Material. Oh. I just think at access. Tating all. Some. Uh, no.
I thought some of the building was supposed to be sunk in the ground on the north side, on the, on the Summers Avenue side, I thought some of the building was supposed to be in the ground.
This dark of year was actually holding back, I saw so the buildings that building backyard. Second, when we leave on the approximate elevation change. I did some uh, the drop to this.
What's the idea behind the slots and the fence, is that just for, uh, looks or what, wouldn't it make more sense for it to be solid?
What?
I have some questions about the fence as well, what materials will it be constructed of?
There are standards.
Okay, and, um, I read the sound study and I looked at the diagrams, but it wasn't clear to me whether or not the, um, fifty to sixty decibels along the attenuation fence were with the fence there or without it, I, I didn't see the fence on the diagram. Sounds.
So we sound study goes on to add edition of. So, and with
So who conducted the, uh, sound study, was that done by your company or is some an independent? Alex, do you concur with their finding?
I, um, I found that the study was, uh, interesting from the standpoint that, um, it basically stated that the facility that will not comply with activities at nighttime, only for daytime activities. Uh, in order to meet the sound levels that is in the ordinance. Which the question I had would be is what exactly is the hours of operation that this facility is?
I, I don't believe that study said, uh, the study indicates that operations, so I operations. The sound study then notes that
Okay, what's the, what's the hours of operation as far as
Don't have a ten at this point, so it's not limited our hours, um. Sound study, as I said, indicates that operation of the use itself comply at all times, sound study indicates that the truck traffic in the overnight hour would exceed the maximum decibel level. But as I set forth previously in my emails, that's not what the ordinance regulates. The ordinance regulates the activity of the use, provides a specific exemption for motor vehicle operations. Truck traffic is a motor vehicle.
I, I disagree with what you're saying as far as what the ordinance is stating with the motor vehicles, I, I believe the, if you look at the sound study, the way I looked at it, I think the the sound expert actually is saying the himself that the ordinance specifically has those two hours daytime and nighttime sound requirements, and that's how he looked at it, he said. And so if you're going to have a trucking facility with trucks operating in the evening, then he's basically in his report said that that would not comply with the township's sound ordinance.
Because I asked him to look at it, he's not a lawyer, he's not expected to read the ordinance and interpret the ordinance, we asked him to study it so we could provide the information.
But the interesting part, I guess, is that the daytime operation starts at seven in the morning. It ends at 10:00 PM. Okay, so, so you couldn't start uh, traffic in the loading dock area prior to 7:00 AM.
Well, I disagree, um, eh, with that conclusion based on what the ordinance provides. Um, I asked for, uh, confirmation of that six weeks ago and got no response. So that we could have that discussion, I set it forth in pretty detail, um, the a- analysis of the ordinance, in ordinance is very clear that motor vehicle operations, a term that is not defined, are exempt from those requirements because there are separate requirements for motor vehicle operations, and if the reference is specifically to the PENDO which states what the maximum decibel levels are for motor vehicles and motor vehicle operations, we will comply with those at all time. Besides all of that, we are willing to accept a restriction on some deliveries. We're willing to accept a limitation on when we will and will not have truck traffic regardless of the tenant, we would impose it on any tenant. Are we willing to do 10 to 7? I don't think so. But we are willing to limit our deliveries. Even though I don't believe that the ordinance requires them.
Well, I will continue to disagree with, with the way you're reading it because sound level is a sound level during certain operating periods. So if it exceeds it, then you're in violation of that.
You mentioned a, a fifteen foot drop, um, the side of your building that faces, uh, residents across Summers Lane. Uh, how tall is your building? So still about, about twenty-five foot above. That's, that's what the residents would be looking at. Okay. The, um, fire marshal had, uh, wrote a note in November about hydrants. Um, I've hadn't heard, I didn't hear you mention anything about, uh, the installation of those, but they're requesting fire hydrants installed at four corners. Are you, are you doing that?
Yes, they're on the plan.
Oh, one other thing, one interesting note, um, the landscaping, the, the photo of the landscaping that you took, uh, from yes, the direction that the, um, residents will be looking, uh, through to your building was taken from the ground level. Uh, residents who have decks and stuff will be looking at that, they'll be looking over those.
Understood.
It's a concern. No further questions.
Uh, you mentioned, uh, that the fence was going to be six feet, we have, uh, eight feet, is eight feet?
I'm sorry, I misspoke, my apologies. My, my question is, uh, what dictated eight feet, why not twelve foot fence or?
The maximum your ordinance permit.
Um. The other question I had was, uh, I know you said you don't have a tenant yet, but generally in the operation of warehouses like this, do the trucks generally come in and drop their load off, pick it up and leave, or they, are they sitting there the entire time while they're offloading, loading?
I, I think that will be very tenant driven in terms of what their activity is, whether or not, you know, a, a vehicle simply comes, sits at a loading dock, um, and may be there all day before they leave, or whether or not these are in and out, uh, quick trips.
I'm sure.
And, yeah, I mean, the trucks are not permitted to idle, um, when they're on-site, um, that will be posted here and, and enforced here as well. Uh, it's state law as well, but I know that people don't necessarily abide by that.
So who, who would, uh, be responsible for enforcing that, the, the company, or would, would that be up to township, police officers? I'm just asking because in times like, you know, August, July, they can't sit there and idle in the air conditioning, it's a hundred and ten degrees outside, what, you know, they go inside or what?
They, they would have to at, at that point.
That's, that was why I asked, um, who, who polices that because generally, you know, people, you know, it's a, it's an, it's an ordinance, it's a law, but
It is.
You know, people don't abide by laws all the time. It's a hundred and ten degrees, they're gonna have their air conditioning blasting.
And, and I mean, the, the plan of attack obviously is that hopefully that the operator in the facility can instruct their drivers that they're not permitted, it'll be signed, it's required to be signed in that area. If it is determined that they are not complying, they are not enforcing it, hopefully that escalates to the owner of the property, my client, who then can instruct them that they must have, uh, you know, the, the trucks turned off and not idle. Uh, the township would also have the right to enforce that beyond that, we hope it wouldn't get to that level, but certainly have that enforcement capability. The last thing we want to do is burden the township with that enforcement, but if it got there, they have that ability to do so.
And listening to your, your brief, uh, I don't recall you mentioning, uh, light pollution. Um, will you, obviously this building is going to be lit or the exterior is going to be lit. So to what degree is that going to, um, affect the neighbors on Summers Lane?
There's a lighting plan included in our plan set that demonstrates compliance with your ordinance.
All right, not to beat it to death to circle around to the noise again. I'm just curious if our solicitor is in agreement with your view of the ordinance as it pertains to operations and vehicles and things like that, because, because my worry is the, the standards have been set for operations. This is a warehouse, trucks are part of the operations, you can't have operations without the trucks, I know trucks are exempt as per different codes and stuff like that. But you're still going to be operating, these trucks are going to be making noise. I mean, just because they're not included in, you know, the definition of of for the ordinance, doesn't mean that the residents aren't going to hear these things.
We understand that, and that's why we are willing to make. What we believe to be an accommodation, because we understand, we don't want trucks delivering here at one o'clock in the morning and midnight and two and three o'clock in the morning. We don't want that either.
But but you keep saying, though, it depends on the tenant.
No, we're willing, we're willing to accept some restriction on our on our truck traffic and our deliveries here. We're not, we're not willing to accept 10:00 PM till 7:00 AM, which is what the ordinance would say for the other activities that would exceed that decibel level. Since we don't know the tenant, but we are willing to accept some restriction on those deliveries.
Yeah, but if the township and the residents feel that 10 to 7 is a reasonable time not to be disturbed. I understand that, you know, you don't want to go by those guidelines, but.
It's not, I don't think that the guy, I I mean, I think I've made it clear. I don't believe those guidelines apply. I didn't interact the ordinance. I'm telling you what the ordinance provides, what I believe it provides. The ordinance says that motor vehicle operations are not subject to tho- those decibel limits. And remember, decibel limits here are. Not for an industrial or warehouse use, but rather what is adjacent, right? So we are subject to the most stringent decibel level requirements in the ordinance, despite the fact that we are zoned industrial. It's a very challenging situation for us to be in. So then we have to look at, okay, what can we do? What can we provide for our tenants? We look at the ordinance and the ordinance says those sound limits apply to the use of the facility. And we've demonstrated compliance without the sound wall to the to that level. So we've gone above and beyond that already by putting in the eight foot tall sound barrier, which we don't need to comply with the ordinance. We put it in anyway because it makes sense. It does some buffering for our neighbors. We're trying to be good neighbors in that respect. We're also saying, on top of that, we will limit our deliveries on some level. All of that, I think, is well beyond what your ordinance requires. So we are trying to find an accommodation and find a way to be a better neighbor. But it doesn't mean that we need to accept 10 to 7 because I don't think that's what the ordinance requires us to. And and what I might suggest then too, if if I'm not sure where the planning commission will end up at the end of the evening, but if. You are, you obviously have the power to recommend the imposition of conditions. And so if the planning commission is inclined to do something and disagrees with me, you can always recommend that the Board of Commissioners. Impose the condition of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We may disagree with that and we can take it up with the commissioners. But at least you will make your viewpoint known.
Alex, did you have any other comments on this? I still believe that while they have addressed and they. Good strides in trying to comply with the ordinance requirements is basically coming down to. In my opinion, two two major issues. Basically, the the first issue, which is up definitely up to planning commission. Residents, Board of Commissioners is. You know, will this building sitting at the top of this particular site? You know, fit with the character of the neighborhood and not. You know, look like an eyesore, I think, but that that's not an engineering judgment. I think that's, like you said, planning commission, board of commissioners, residents, what they feel. This building will do because it's going to be highly visible. For a long time after it's constructed, so it's a matter of making sure you've you've picked, you know, they've done it right and and it. And it could also be just a matter of if if the building is going to be there, perhaps they ought to consider. If the somebody is considering that it doesn't, it's going to look like an eyesore. Maybe they just have to maybe try to, you know, provide maybe additional architectural aesthetic. Features to the building to maybe help it bit better. But aside from that, that that to me, I think, is the one large. Issue, and then I still go with sound. I mean, we. We have a a large, close to ten acre property that is smack next to the residential. Properties of the rear yard in their backyard and. And sound, I think, is in all of the performance standards that they have to comply with as far as the odor, vibration. Glare and and dust and whatever, all of those issues have to be, I think, carefully looked at because of the fact that it's very sensitive to be able to have. You know, this type of district adjacent to the backyards of the residential neighborhood, so. While while it may not. For example, when I when I'm asking for for them to to look at the sound door construction. I mean, whether the ordinance requires it or not. You're looking at. Probably like a good six to twelve month construction. Project, if not longer, and. Residents are going to have to put up with that louder sound than you would get from a construction activity for that long period. Because it's definitely construction equipment, I think, will be even louder than than the trucks themselves. During the operation of the site. I I would think that i- if they. If they were able to move along with the sound issue and and deal with construction at minimum, I think that. There ought to be a construction sequence that would require that the grading and the sound wall. Along the property line would be maybe something that they have to incorporate as like the primary. First and second items, let's say, to try to get at least some. If you can get that sand wall up front first and not wait till they near the middle or the end of the project, perhaps at least that could help mitigate the fact that the sound wall might provide. You know, some some effectiveness from the construction activity. So that that could be maybe, you know, an option that they can maybe consider. To help mitigate the that issue with sound, but then. When it comes to operations itself. The way I read, like I said, the way I read the report, I think it was very clear that, you know, the operation like you and and I think. As you believe, it makes to me also common sense. If the if the facility is a trucking distribution facility, the operations is all based on trucks getting in and out. So I don't know how you can separate. That and the report said that the sound. From the trucks, you know, in that loading dock area. Will exceed the sound levels determined as the in the ordinance for nighttime operations. Which to me would definitely hinder, you know, how they're going to operate this facility. So I think we have to definitely get that squared away. And if we can get those two items squared away, I I would, I would concur with the fact that they did make a lot of. Positive efforts with stormwater and traffic and landscaping and site lighting. I mean, they've 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 gone very well in in all the other. Items of the ordinance, so. Just a matter of, but I guess what the solicitor feels on sound or what the residents and the planning commission feel on on sound issues and or the aesthetics of the building. I mean, personally, as far as the aesthetics, I appreciate the, we finally got the rendering. Although when I looked at it, it kind of took me back because it's okay to look on the plan here and try to envision what it would be, but. Only count it's a big building.
It is.
And and it's. It's there, and it's going to be there for a long time. And it's something that if, you know, we. Prove to go forward, that everybody's going to have to be happy with. Living in residence as but as we move forward with this.
I'll read no comments until after the citizens have had their.
Same here.
Okay, I would open up the floor to any comments from the residents. Open up the floor for for any comments.
When you come, you need to speak at the microphone, please state your name, your address, telephone number, and then you can make your comment.
Anthony Dalvatio, fifteen oh four Summers Lane. You absolutely need my telephone number? Okay, so I stepped out for a minute. I don't know if they covered the existing trees that are on the property line. So don't mind. This, I had my property surveyed by any company. This tree. That tree falls over just now with wind. And you're more than happy, I mean, more than happy to come onto my property, you can have it. I would love that tree there. Before before it falls down, I mean, because it's more likely going to fall right onto my house. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention more than anything else. And if you want to come by unexpected, in person, be my guest. My number is four eight four. Nine one nine. One eight six. Anthony. And that's really all I have. That tree needs to go if you don't know. Thank you.
Maureen Wall, fifty one oh five Martin Avenue. I have a few things. Some based on what you started with. One of the things that you you've talked about that, you know, Chelsea Road's not in. Chelsea Parkway's not in great shape right now, and certainly agree with that. But adding the number of trucks that are going to be going back and forth over it. Is going to compound that significantly. And the road will start to look like Martin Avenue that's all dirt and gravel before too many years. So that's a concern. You mentioned that part of the sound study at least is done saying it's all inside activities. Every one of the warehouses I've worked with operates a good bit of the time in the summer with the loading bay doors open. So that the sound is not just inside the building. It is expect going out into the neighborhood. A gentleman asked about the fire hydrants. Are you going to have sprinklers? I assume you do. You're going to have a fire pump as well? So you don't know right now whether you would. Okay. That one was more curious. So. I'm sure most of the people in this room know there's a very similar. Type of situation over in Aston where there's. Two warehouses recently built. One has been leased, but the occupant isn't expected to take over until sometime in the fall. The other one still sits vacant. These were just constructed through at least August of last year was the main construction. And I do belong to the one of the Aston Facebook groups. And there. One woman took pictures from her backyard during the construction. Where she's got very tall trees. With foliage on them, but you can absolutely see those two buildings through the through the trees. And she talked about how much noise, shaking and rattling of the homes, two AM light shows. And extra dirt in the pools and the porches and in the houses that occurred during the construction. So that was a very significant, and then there were, I don't know how many hundred comments that went with that post. But it was very definitely the construction activities were very terrible to to those. As I said, it's still not got anybody physically operating in there. But I did walk around, drove around and took some pictures of it. Last couple of weeks. And you can see if, can I give this to you guys to to look around? This is. This is what it looks like. From in there, how close the building edge is to the retaining wall. And to the the tree lines and everything. The two bottom pictures. Show it's it's a little harder to see the buildings through those, but then yesterday I went and with a homeowner's permission. Went into her backyard and took pictures from her backyard. And it's amazing how much you can see. Those buildings. And she was also very concerned, all of those old growth trees that are there. The they also dug down twelve or fifteen feet, something like that, and she's concerned that those roots have been disturbed. And that these trees are going to fall down. The the other thing, so you know, that's that's another warehouse that's been shoehorned up against a residential neighborhood. I looked around, just Googled proposed warehouses near me. And without trying to do any real deep initial search. There's existing completed and leased. Two point three million square feet. Within ten miles of here of this farm location. And there's proposed. Constructed, but not leased and under construction, another two point seven million. And that does not include. This one that's. It does include the next, the next presentation, which is two hundred and eleven thousand square feet. But I know that the internet tells us there is a a shortage of warehouse space and everybody wants the new. Types of buildings and and I don't blame them for that. But, you know, malls, whatever, twenty, thirty, forty years were the big thing to do, and now they sit vacant. And in twenty or thirty years, we could have this building be sitting vacant, which. Okay. Okay, and and I'm not sure what commission does watch, but but the things that, you know, if if part of the plan is to. Figure that twenty, thirty years down the road, we're going to have an empty building where somebody taking it over to do something even worse with it. You know. Okay. Okay. But that's, you know, those those are the things that it's, you know, none, other than this Aston location. None of these other warehouses are up against a residential neighborhood like this would be. Those are my comments.
So, all, all of our truck traffic, not all, the vast majority of our truck traffic is expected to arrive Chelsea Park. Pendot has a very large project that they are implementing on three twenty-two, where they're widening three twenty-two. Understood. So, we did a comprehensive traffic analysis that was submitted to the township and reviewed. That study analyzes existing traffic on all the roads. It factors in expected growth in the township, so there's a factor for that. And it also factors in known developments that are going to come online. We analyze what that will do to the roadway network in the vicinity of our project. And then we must add on top of that the projections for our project. If our project caused degradation of the roads, we then have to mitigate those degradations. We have the study and it suggested some, some improvements along our frontage and at the intersection. We are implementing those improvements to make up for any impacts that our traffic will have. In fact, we added some additional improvements at the recommendation of the planning commission that weren't necessary but make sense, including some additions at Chelsea Parker. Any impacts from existing traffic or Pendot's project, we are not expected to mitigate. It's not to say that there won't be additional problems. Pendot's project for three twenty-two causes some closures of existing roads and is going to reroute some traffic. We were asked and actually modified our study to account for that. So our study actually analyzes what happens after the Pendot project happens and distributes our traffic. It's not anticipated that our site will send any traffic on summers. That's not to say that Pendot's work won't. But our project will not send any additional traffic on summers.
Good evening. Actually, it's part of the Pendot. The additions to the fact of the personal. Back to their present, all the, that will have new towns are also proposing all the set summer training. There'll be no access from three twenty-two on Summer's Lane, therefore. So, yes, it has. You're fine. It has been delayed. That is correct. But based on our understanding, the delay and the fact that it was originally scheduled to start maybe three, four or five years ago, based on discussions, you're increasingly the agenda, not a lot of the funding nation would be made use of it. So understanding that that problem could be out in the control. Especially with the official infrastructure funding in place. And that it is likely that that might have occurred in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, beyond. So it's not that far off that urgency. And that all the state we did the exciting study. All the trucks utilize, for the most part, most of the pathways are really. But again, thank you so much for giving me all the sack of milk and sesame.
How you guys doing? I am Evo Popo. I live on one five oh seven Summers Lane. My bedroom window is forty feet above the ground. I will see all of that from my bedroom window. Point one, you can't do a traffic study if you don't know what the tenant is. Point two, if I'm a truck driver, I've been driving all day to make my delivery at that warehouse. Wait a minute, I got there after closing time. Where am I going to park? Where am I going to park my truck? And I'm going to leave it running because, like gentlemen said, it's a hundred degrees out. So if you got me and all my friends that are truck drivers doing the same thing, where's all that noise going? My bedroom window. Greg, you made a point probably two or three meetings ago about truck traffic on Chichester Avenue. They're not just going to be on three twenty-two. They're going to be on Chichester Avenue. That road can't handle that kind of traffic now. There's no plan to widen Chichester Avenue. There's no plan to fix Chichester Avenue. Most of it's full holes, disaster. Then you got to deal with the bridge. So you're going to have trucks trying to come under that bridge, holding up traffic. It's a one lane road. You made that comment probably two or three meetings ago. And, and I remembered. Aesthetically, that's an abomination to look out my window and see that. I can't even see the farm from my window and that building's going to be bigger than the farm. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
My name is Sandy Petruza. I live on five oh five Icon of Port. My phone number I can give you later if you need to call me, but really, I don't think to do. So I sit here and I listen to this and I feel so, so sad that the last working farm in this area has been given up. And it's not planning commission's fault. Family that owned that started right there. They, they decided to let it go. And I heard that we were going to get storage stuff there. But it seems even worse. That building is huge. And I feel really bad for you Summer Lane people because after this starts, you're not going to matter. Nothing is going to stop the progression of this project. When I bought my home on Icon Port, there was nothing there. Since then, they put in the car depot drop off thing. There's trains all the time, blowing storms when they feel like it, whatever they want to do. We have the ten fleet. I don't know. What are the hours of operation? Whatever they want, whenever they want and however they want. There's all kinds of noise. Summertime is definitely worse. There's also four fifty-two. They put in all those things, including a storage area that has so much noise. And that's totally unregulated. What do you do? Who are you going to call and say, somebody's over there blasting one hundred and fifty decibels of jungle music? Now, there's no fix for any of this stuff. And I hear you already saying, well, the hours of operation, you know, it, it only gets worse. So if you can't nip it in the bud now, I guess we would have to be thankful for more income coming in for access.
Anybody else?
I, I just wanted to make sure there was no other residents. I'm a resident of, of Upper Chi. My name is Frank Sill, forty-three oh eight Trophy Drive. Six one oh four nine six four eight three four. That's already out there all over the place, so feel free. I represent, tonight, I, I represent the Chichester Historic Society. I'm a long, longtime member. And the only member that could make it tonight besides somebody that's indisposed to talk. I, I may, I'm, 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 I'm hard of hearing. I have my hearing aids in, but I'm still struggling. So please forgive me if I missed something in your presentation. But I did not hear any, any points taken about the historical aspects of this project. Did I miss that in the beginning or you just didn't approach it? At, at this meeting or, okay, good. I, I just missed it. And, and I'm, I'm seeing in that triangle, I think I saw this, this rendition before, am I seeing the, the proposed, the proposed move of the, of the the home? Okay. Okay. I, I missed that in the beginning. I'm sorry about that.
I thought I was made attention, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to present a couple of documents and, and documents. What it, what it is, is that we were in the Historic Society has been in discussion with the Alliance Group for a little bit now. We had an immediate, we had a, a first kind of a virtual meeting. And since then, a couple of emails going back and forth. I'd like to submit those documents to the planning board. We're not out there, we're not, we're not great preservationists. I mean, we're not out there laying down in front of bulldozers. But we, we really care about our historic resources. And I believe, I believe the Alliance Group has been amiable to speaking with us and amiable to doing something. But I'd like to submit these because our, our last correspondence with them has not been answered. I don't think for any wrong reason. I think that maybe they just haven't got around to it yet. But we submitted, my first document would be a submission of, of what the Historic Society first saw as some, what we would like to see happen, some different scenarios. And then we received from, I guess, Craig, I guess you's. Yeah, you did this document. You crafted us. You know, there are answers to that, which did, which did approach some of the issues. But not, it was mostly the, the minor, not, not just minor, but just some of the low hanging fruit kind of issues. And we had, we sent another document to them telling them that we would like to discuss it further. And, and I think we were going to, and I think you have every intention of doing that. I believe so. I would hope so. I would hope that this email that we received from you isn't your definitive, this is it, this is all we will do. I, I don't think we had that kind of, you know, you know, atmosphere in our, in our discussions. I, I hope and think you are amiable to other considerations. And so I'd like to submit these to the planning board so that regardless of what you do, moving this forward or not, if it does go forward, that the commissioners are aware of this correspondence. I mean, these thoughts. And I'll, and I'll leave you with this. History, history. The, the young lady that said something about the last, the last working farm, I don't know how hard they were working. The goats were working on the grass out there. I know they were. But the Hamby family that owned that goes back a long time. My father worked there. And that's not that long ago. That's just, you know, beginning of nineteen twenty or thirty. They, they. The, the grammar in past that we had here in Chi has disintegrated. You know, we are built up. It would be perfect if we could have the wherewithal to have that building and that barn and that property stay open space. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. Nobody's been able to step up to the plate, including the township to this point and make that happen. So we have these possible neighbors coming in. And my hope was that they would be sensitive to what our town is becoming and what part of it they can be. And that's all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Frank, do, do you have any, Frank, Frank, Frank? Frank? Do, do you have any points that you can touch on regarding, I mean, just general overview of what else you were, you were looking for? I mean, it'll be quicker than everybody.
Originally, our Historic Society met and we talked about, eh, what do we want out of that? Now, there's been some other plans out. One, one town was going to get it and make a, the paradigm of making like a, they go orchards there. That didn't work out. Didn't have plenty. But we thought.
In, in this order, relocate, relocate egress and ingress on Chichester Avenue and adjust the size of the warehouse to allow the house and barn to remain in their current locations. Ideal. Relocate the house and barn on site. Could work. Relocate the house on site, dismantle the barn and move it to another location. Or relocate the house on site, dismantle the barn and reuse elements where possible. That's often done in, in, in historic demolition. They, you repurpose the materials. Make remaining salvage of parts available for use. Those items contemplate providing, also providing funding for rehabilitation and long-term maintenance of the buildings, including updating mechanical and structural systems, so I'll dance a certificate of occupancy. Dedicated access to parking, which we talked about. And, and something not really trite, it's important to history. Use of the names, the old Middleton or Larkin or Salt Key Larkin names on naming the site when you have, you know, signage or naming your site. And, and also interpretive signage displaying the history and images of the site. That was just our, our first communication and discussion that we've sent to Alliance. And we received back from them, I, I mean, this is rather, this is two pages. I don't think you wanted to read all that.
Just a general.
It seems in this document, and, and if I'm, if I'm paraphrasing too, too little or too much, correct me, that you're willing to move the house. And there it is, the evidence of it there. And that, that's a big undertaking. That's, that's expensive. And some parking. And I think a couple of other things you alluded to, that preservation, relocation of the historic home, providing adjacent accessible parking. Preservation includes weatherproofing the historical home to avoid further degradation. Dismantling the barn. Elements of the barn may be reused on site. And all remaining salvage of parts will be made available with the township and or society for off-site use. Not a bad start, but we, our, our answer was that basically we acknowledged the receipt of our letter and we're very thankful to have these discussions with them and, and visibility involved in all of it. And, and, but our primary, primary concern is that these plans don't address, don't address our most important points on our list. And, and those points would be, you know, just not moving the building. I mean, just not moving the building. You know? Help us renovate the building. And it's our building. They could have a tenant, but make that part of the reuse. And possibly in the dismantling of the barn, maybe another building or, or pavilion or something be made out of the elements of the barn. You know, speaking to our grary impasse and allowing access, you know, maybe not public access all the time, but some type of access that at different times during the year where the public could visit the site. And, and several other things. So. That's, that's about it. We're, we're just looking, the Historic Society is just looking to try to preserve the history for the future of our town. Somebody earlier talked about forty years from now, I think it was you, forty years, forty years from now, right? What's going on? And, and, and I think that's very appropriate thing to talk about. It has to do with planning and what we're planning. I oftentimes think sixty years from now, everybody's going to know who Frank Sill is. You know, members of the planning board. I mean, everybody might know who we are, but, but it's all going to be gone. All the history is going to be gone. It's just up to us to save what we can. And we only have this one moment in time to do it. This is the last, the last farmland in our town. Several have fallen before. I'd like to save what we can do. That's it.
Does the Lions have any input into that at all? Gentlemen?
I, I mean, I'll be very brief. Frank's synopsis was not, I didn't disagree with very much that he had to say. I, I think the only point that was missed is that what we have indicated is that as soon as we obtain a tenant, we are more than willing to invest money for that tenant to rehabilitate the structure beyond simply preserving it the way it is. So Alliance is spending a lot of money to move this house. We could not keep it where it is. You cannot develop the site if the house stays where it is. The locate, the access point. The locate, the access point to this property is determined by the existing intersection. The house sits at that access. So the house could either be demolished, it could be relocated offsite or it could be relocated onsite. What we understood to be the priority was to relocate it onsite. So we are doing that. We certainly hope to have a tenant for that and make use of it. We don't know what that may be, maybe it becomes some sort of gathering space, maybe it becomes a commercial tenant. But until we know that, we're not sure exactly the extent of additional investment that will go into it. But our goal primarily at the outset is to make sure that it does not further degrade and that it is maintained. And we look forward to working with the Historic Society. Once we do find a tenant or once we have ideas for tenants, so that we can talk to them and figure out what's the best way to rehabilitate the structure.
Wouldn't it be in the best interest, interest of Alliance to redo it if they're actively looking for a tenant as someone who wants to move into a historical home is going to want it redone, you know? It'd be easier to get a tenant.
I, I don't think anybody's ever going to utilize it as a residence. It, it is most likely to end up being utilized it for commercial purposes of some sort or gathering space, something like that. So, but again, the, the investment that is going into it already, simply to relocate it is tremendous. And so until there is a viable tenant, additional investment can't be made into it. We are hoping to have that tenant and once we do, we will work with them and we will make that additional investment.
Rob, I have a question too. Sit back, can you still hear me? In the renderings, I meant to ask this earlier, is there a rendering with the house in its relocated site?
There is not, there is not.
Can that be provided?
Now, is, is the house going to be at least mothballed and waterproofed so it doesn't fall apart while it's sitting waiting for a tenant?
Correct, correct. There, you know, there's adequate ways to make sure that it stays weatherproofed so that it's not demolition by neglect.
Does anybody else have any comments or anything again? Alright, so you're looking for a preliminary final vote tonight?
Yes, sir.
Chuck, do you want to check with callers? There, there could be someone.
Hey, do we have any caller?
Chuck, on, on the prior question about town. The ordinance says that, you know, believe six five decimals from seven AM to ten PM and from ten PM to seven AM, sixty decimals maximum. So Rob, I'm not sure what, what you were saying, that there's a different interpretation.
Subsection three of six hundred dash two oh one specifically provides motor vehicle operations have their own independent noise levels, which are established by chapter one fifty seven of title sixty seven Pennsylvania code regulations. Subchapter B, and if you go into those requirements, so the pen dot, I believe it indicates that under state regulations, motor vehicles, including trucks are permitted to emit decimal levels of eighty-six to ninety-two dB. The ordinance, I didn't write the ordinance, all I can tell you is what it says. Alex, this is why I sent this out in an email six weeks ago. The ordinance provides certain levels for activity on site and then provides a different set of standards for motor vehicle operation. I, I love it, Alex, it's great. It's not clear. Correct. I re, Alex, I respect you, I disagree with you.
Yes. Okay. My name's Christina Popo, I'm at one five oh seven Summersley. So I think I just need some explanation, you know, explain this whole sound, so seven to ten, but the clause comes in that if it's trucks, it doesn't abide by that, in my understanding that. That's what I don't understand. I don't know, that's what I'm trying to understand.
And maybe I'll, I'll step it back for you for a second, so. Let me, let me try and give my, my. Alex, Alex, I'm going to answer the question, forget it, take your. Respectfully, disagree. Alex, I'm not going to argue with you here, Alex. You, six weeks ago, you refused to answer my question. Now, tonight you want to argue with me about it, that's fine. You, you want your email, I'll hand it to you. I've made it clear to the planning commission, I think that what the ordinance says, I've also obviously indicated planning commission has the ability, if you make a recommendation, to include proposed or recommended conditions. I'm happy to explain one more time my reading of the ordinance and then explain what I think we have done above and beyond the ordinance. We are not trying to do the bare minimum that the ordinance requires. If we were, we wouldn't be putting a sound wall in here. If we were, we wouldn't be indicating to the planning commission that we are willing to talk about some limitations on, on overnight deliveries. The operations of the building inside, what have you, they don't violate the ordinance, they aren't going to violate the ordinance. The only thing that potentially even at issue would be truck trap, which I submit to you, the ordinance says we do not have to deal with. But that's a disagreement between us. So again, I've made my point in the planning commission, I'm happy to go through it again. You are certainly capable and able to apply conditions to any recommendation.
Comment? And the noise in my bedroom, at least it's but I can't imagine having the traffic of trucks, I want to talk to the noise. That's all, I'm, if you consider doing, you know, it's inevitable this building is going to I just want to know, I want something that's going to say no traffic. And I know, let's be real, you're going to run into something, you're going to it's just, it's been a quiet living room for so long, it's big disruption. So, you know, that's where I, I hear like seven to ten, I'm hearing that but it's unavoidable, you know, and that it could go on. So that's where I want.
And I think what my wife is trying to say is, respect you. They just made the comment, we don't have to deal with the noise level. We do, you do. Because when it's loud, I'm calling the police. The police, it's going to run uphill. And not to mention the fact that building this project, if anybody's ever dug a hole in Chichester, full of rock. Everywhere, granite, rock, what are they going to do? I asked, dig, jackhammer?
Do you have any comments from the commission?
I didn't, Chuck. Sit back here, I, I do. With all due respect to Alliance and your efforts to make this plan acceptable to the community and the planning commission, I have some serious concerns about it myself. Not the least of which is the strong reservation and the concerns that I've heard from the residents during these three meetings or so. This sound issue concerns me that it's not resolved and you're asking for a vote. I have concerns, you know, that Frank expressed about the loss of the last farm, preservation of the buildings on the site, et cetera. But having said all that, given my involvement with preservation efforts at the site, I am going to abstain from the vote.
So I guess now it's time to call for a vote? At the risk of delaying this again, and I know you guys work very hard in, in getting this through, but we, we don't seem to be seeing eye to eye on the noise issues. And, and I understand your viewpoint, and I understand Alex's viewpoint, and I would love to have some sort of resolution on this before we then attempt it to vote. Because I'm not overly favorable to the city, to, to the project at this point, strictly because of the noise. There's one or two other things that kind of hurt me about it, but noise is a major thing that's going to affect the residents.
Our current, the Board of Commissioners needs to act this plan at their next set of meetings. I don't believe there's another planning commission meeting before that occurs. So we would appreciate moving it forward this evening. What I would like to suggest is that if the planning commission makes a recommendation, as I was trying to say before, you could very well make a recommendation that says we recommend that a condition be placed, that there be no deliveries in accordance with the ordinance between the hours of ten and seven. That would address, because the sound study says that that's the only thing that would exceed the evening hours is the truck trap. You could put a condition on, if that's what your concern is, that truck traffic deliveries do not occur between those hours. We would then have the right to either accept or reject that condition moving forward. But at least that allows you to address and essentially adopt Alex's position in your recommendation. If that's what the planning commission is inclined to do. We get to then try and resolve it before we get to the Board of Commissioners and get on the same page. Or the Board of Commissioners is likely to either deny the plan or apply the same condition and then we have to decide what to do from there. That would be my recommendation, that if, if you, if you think that there's confusion, you can take Alex's position and make it a condition of any recommendation that you make.
You can call a, a short executive session if you want to have a discussion. You can't make any decisions, obviously, unless you're in a public forum. But if you feel a need to discuss a couple of issues, you could call for an executive session and come back and, and then decide where, where you're going to go with this.
Should we take five in the other room? Alright, I'd like to go for an executive session to discuss one or two items. If everybody wants to take a break and figure about five minutes or so. I do have a question for you gentlemen. Would you be willing to consider filing an extension at all? Or you definitely want to vote tonight?
Respectfully, we would like a vote this evening.
Do we hear a motion for voting on the application?
I'll make a motion of voting on the application with conditions. Okay, so we discussed a few issues. And we're willing to go ahead with a vote with these conditions. Consider a smaller building design. So that's point one. Point two. Subdued exterior lighting, specifically note exterior lights pointed towards residents. Point three, construction sound barrier put up between the building construction and residents. That is one that's high enough that residents are not impacted by the construction of your building. Point four, no truck traffic between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Point five. Improved building aesthetics. Point six, rendering of historical building that's currently on site.
Do we hear a second for the motion?
Yeah, I'll second based on those conditions.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes, with the conditions.
Yes, with the conditions.
Yes, with conditions.
So just to, it's public that's here, this is an advisory board. These are non-binding decisions. What happens now is this goes in front of the Board of Commissioners. And Board of Commissioners are in authority to act and approve plans. The way that we typically handle this, so this will be to the developer to ensure that they'd be available, is that we require the developer to give a presentation to the Board of Commissioners and the public at the caucus meeting. The caucus meeting in August is August 4th, 7:30 PM. They will take questions from the public, questions from the Board of Commissioners at that time. They will take that information back, and they will present a resolution to either approve or deny the plan at the next board meeting, which would be August 11th. I'm sorry. Yes, August 11th at 7:30 PM. These conditions will be communicated to the Board of Commissioners, and they will be. They will be, they will have the privy to all the information that they've always been privy to in the plan. And they will start their process.
Yes.
Height of the building.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 900 Township Line Road presentation.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Vince Fiorevanti here with Mr. Frazano, Paul Buco for 900 Township Line Road. We have a plan before you tonight where we're going to ask the board to consider the recommendation of preliminary and final. We did receive review letters from the various consultants. I think what might be appropriate would be that I do a brief overview of the project. And we can go through the four waivers that I believe were requesting. And then after that, we have some discussion items and we can answer any questions you may have. So if that's okay, we have a rendered exhibit. Before you're here, there's a couple of sheets. I want to see if I can. I get to control this with the mouse or. Okay, good. Okay, I'm going to start with the landscape plan, just to give you an overview. Then we'll discuss the existing features a little bit, a couple of unique features of the property. Then go back to the sheet we just saw where I'll show how utilities all work. Before I get into the waivers. Overall, it's a 24 acre site. Industrial TLC zone. We're proposing a warehouse compliant with building coverage and impervious cover 211,000 square feet. This site is, I believe, perfectly situated for this type of use. Unlike the previous application, the warehouse is in front of us. I-95 behind us, that's elevated. Loading docks on this property are all, there's a 90 of them, they're all between the building. And the elevated ramp for I-95. So even though there's warehouses in front of us. And no residential properties until you're crossing the street. The loading docks and the loading activities will be. Isolated between the building and and the elevator ramps of I-95. So in terms of isolating the sound and any kind of disturbance. I think the property is ideal for this type of use. And the scroll to. Existing features plan for a moment. This is a topographic plan. And so any any property that's been vacant for as long as this one has. Starts to develop some. Building encroachments, some. Some unique features, if you will. You'll notice right away that I've highlighted an area in yellow in the middle. What happens with drainage on the property is it drains to the Marcus Hook Creek to the Delaware River. In three different areas, and this will, we'll discuss this later, but. Drainage area in this site comes down to the property. There is a swell that runs down the middle. You know, when God created the land, it drained in this direction. Towards this Marcus of Creek to the Delaware. Then over the years, it was developed and there's there's a low spot. Kind of runs through the middle like this. Then this building came here, I don't know how or when. But there's a pipe, there's a low spot in the building right here in the site. And there's a building right here. So there's a drainage pipe that goes underneath this building, 24 inch reinforced concrete. It's an opening here in this area and this area all drained to here. And they drain through the pipe and then the headwaters of this unnamed tributary small stream. That runs the Marcus though. So I just point that out because this is something that we have to deal with when we develop our stormwater management system. The area to the right is undisturbed and also drains to the Delaware River. I'm not sure, I think it may come back down to the Marcus Hook Creek. Essentially, our development is in this this third and this third of the property. Now I'm going to go back to. The first sheet, see if I can. Back to this one. So here's a grading and utilities plan. It's when described how everything is controlled. How everything's designed. We went through some what I consider to be rigorous reviews. That's why I think preliminary final would be in order. And here's the accessway. 36 foot wide, two-way access. Here's the secondary access. And I better point with the laser. Here's a secondary emergency access that we added. You know, we thought it was probably unnecessary because this is, this is 36 foot wide. But still it was mentioned to us that it would be desirable, so we did it. We did try to give everything that was asked of us. In order to make the project go smoothly. So there's the main access, emergency access, and we can put a gate here to prevent. Unauthorized use when it's not an emergency, is one of the comments, one of the reviews. We look at utilities. You can see a line here. With the blue squares. That's where we take the water main from the street, bringing it down. And then we're circulating it around the building. You can see the water main then does a complete circle around the entire facility. There are five fire hydrants proposed so that they're covered for fire protection. Actually shown in the light blue, it's difficult to see them all, but there's five of them. There's one there and there's one here. There's one in different spots all the way around. They give you the provided coverage for fire protection. In terms of sanitary sewer for the project. There's a pump involved. Private ejector pump here. You can see the red line with force main comes up the street, emergency access. Ties into the sewer on the street. We're working with Delcor right now to get the sewer approvals in place. We have that already in progress. That's how the water and sewer come into the property. Stormwater is always a concern. Again, we mentioned, and you can see it highlighted. The blue comes underneath the building, comes out here. And then goes to. And the headwaters of the small tributary that drain Mark's. So now in our post-development scenario. Remember the site here, there's a large area here that drained to it. A large area on the adjoining property that drained to it. So now we're cutting off all the property of ours that drains here. And we're intercepting it with storm sewers or taking it to our stormwater system. There are stormwater lines all the way around the building. Which direction? That feed underground to an area right here, you can see it in green under the parking lot. It's a two-phase stormwater management system. But this part of the site is what we call managed release system. Underground stone bed for areas for water quality control, basically. Two-year storm. So all the storm work from the entire paved area goes here first, underground in this underground bed. From that underground bed, it then goes to the detention area. There are some detention base network familiar that. Mitigate peak flows and controls them. Ports then released to the Marcus Hook Tributary. So our stormwater is collected, controlled here. Then controlled in a second stage here. And released here. So we're taking the water that used to drain here and it all came this way anyway. But we're eliminating a lot of the drainage that came sending. So that's how the stormwater system works and meets all the township and state requirements. We still have to get EEP permits and approvals. And once we get through approval from the township, then we'll go to the state and get our outside agency permits. Another feature of the property is this building here that approaches. Again, you always see that on large vacant parcels. Over the years, people's basketball courts and such end up breaking on the line. There's a building here that doesn't approach maybe four feet over the property. My intention says we'll just leave alone. Allowed to exist. There would be a deal here. That's essentially the overall picture. Again, if you look at the site, also the wetlands. You need a couple of wetlands, general permits for driveway crossings. There's, they're only maybe 600, 700 square feet each of the crossing right here. The wetlands play end here and they end here and we'll kind of go in the middle of them. But we're going to disturb, you know, maybe 900 square feet, both on both sides. There's three separate crossings. One we have here. We're crossing the driveway. One here. I believe there's three of them. You can see with the location on the picture, but pretty small general wetlands permits. Most of the wetlands are here and they're served. They do show up on our plan. With that being said, that's the overall, the gist of the project. We don't have a tenant yet, don't have architecture plans for the building yet. But again, you can see that the parking requirements are met here. Truck loading is in the back. Fire easement, 30 foot wide, it goes all the way around the entire. Project all the way out to the street. Emergency access. If you'd like, I could go through, there are four waivers that we feel that we need. We actually think we only need two of them. But if the board believes that we need four, then we're going to request all four. Say the first one. What is all utilities within 200 feet shall be shown. That's standard. And our our request for that is because we show the relevant utilities. You know, within 200 feet. So if there's utilities, let's say 200 feet from the property, 200 feet across Township Line Road. There's a water valve over here. It's not worth the money to go locate it because it has no impact on the project. So any utilities that are relevant, we've located. And we request a waiver to have to go 200 feet in every direction for utilities. That's a standard waiver that we see requested and granted frequently. That's waiver number one. Waiver number two. The waiver. Have to go to preliminary and final. So we're requesting preliminary and final at the same time. And again, we did submit this twice to the staff and their consultants and we got two. Detailed reviews and in between the two reviews. We had our engineers work with the township consultants. Tried to get everything that we needed so that we could kind of streamline it. So the preliminary final, so that is warranted. The new that remaining are basically will comply items. So that was waiver number two. So we'll also go preliminary final at the same time. Number three, and we we wrote a separate waiver justification letter. For the chance to read it. Number three was regarding the repairing buffer to the stream. Language of the code says that a 50-foot buffer is required stream that runs. Long end property. Code actually provides for utility. Without a waiver. Missionary approval. Could reduce that with 25. Because the waiver, the 10 feet. We're only requesting 25 feet buffer that that's what we have provided here. So it can be done without a waiver. If the commissioners approve it. And some of the conditions in the ordinance for requesting 25 feet. That imposition of 50 feet have detrimental impacts. Well. That would definitely happen. If I were to put 50 foot buffer. Basin would have to move up. File has to move up, the party will be reduced. Justifying 25 feet. Again, our stormwater management system. And actually ordinance can let you go to 10 feet, you know, if it's a way. But if you look at the stream. You look at the protection that's going to be afforded by the site. First of all, we're capturing all the stormwater. Peak rates of flow are going to be reduced right now from the existing condition where there's no paving. We're we're required to reduce the peak levels. Do that in our. We also have the managed leak facility, two-stage stormwater treatment. Also, if I look at the landscaping plan on the next slide, the landscaping of buffer and burn between all of this. Not only are we controlling the stormwater filtering, it managing peaks. Buffer landscaping between our development and the stream. And we're providing a 25-foot wide buffer. I think we're going as far as anyone could possibly go. It's more protected now. So we feel justified in requesting approval of the 25-foot buffer. Instead of. I think ordinance allows for that. They, I think it does a big job in stating the grounds upon which. That was waiver three, where things we need a waiver, we think that it's valuable. Perhaps a recommendation from the word. Commissioners, they would have to approve 25 feet. That's waiver three. The next one is the Armored Corps of Engineers jurisdictional determination. It was stated in one of the review letters. That an Army Corps of Engineers JD. Required wetland. Now, in the ordinance, the language in the ordinance itself. Doesn't say that we need between the Armored Corps of Engineers and says that, I have one here. 505, 16. Beats and says location and delineation of weapon. Based upon the appropriate regulatory requirement. So we have, plan shall include in the list of things plan shall include. Number 10 is location and delineation of weapon. Based upon appropriate regulatory requirements. So we hire, as we always do, wetlands experts, we keep wetland scientists. We're out studying soils and plants and all those regular proof requirements for any of the wetlands. They go out in field, they put the stakes in the ground. We're here. Survey, they go out and survey them and perhaps some of the weapons. We haven't flown the weapons before. We'll be filing general permits that are based on their. So that's good to me, what we do for all of our projects and. And that's what we do. Not necessarily to have an armed Corps of Engineers come. Bring in the weapons. When they walk in. And I have a stick and analogy to that. That would be like the third pack that I was playing amongst three, which you do sometimes, you know, depending on the situation. Things in being is just adding another few components. Unnecessary and. I don't believe it's required by the statute. Doesn't say. Of course, that we have to do. According to appropriate regulatory requirements. All the requirements, we've got the government. All in there. That was waiver four. Again, if the board thinks we need a waiver. Think we don't need three or four. If we move one and waivers one and two. But if the board thinks otherwise, then we request those waivers three. Otherwise, I think the project's relatively straightforward. On the left side, it's a super fun site. Front, we have warehouses. We're screened from all our. Our trucking, loading activities. There's a landscape plan that we actually had our landscape architect. Walk the site. With the landscape planner. Make sure that we tried to give everyone. The landscaping that's proposed warehouse. Around basin. Landscaping in parking lot, which is all around. Streetscape. Sidewalk. All the comments that in the last letter, the sidewalk here. There were the selective, if you look at the site and look at the trees, there are mature trees going. Talked about site meeting, the required specs, selective thinning of the vegetation here. Trees that ensure that it's quite. Here after rush and unmoored nice and supplement of those. Also another. And still open. One of the comments aimed at my second. Sidewalks that look straight, handling the flowing that you can look there and that's fine. Trying to do other things that are not. That's essentially your overview. Entire project. And I guess at this point. If you want to go through. There are some things like proposed sign locations, because we don't have any. Otherwise, I think everything is. As straightforward as one could think.
How high is the building? Is your general estimate?
Is your general estimate?
Sixty feet. At this point in time, there are some interested parties, but they'll have some feedback as the height and. Sun, is it forty? Yeah, we have it on the, on the plan, building height. It says actually, I don't know, is it TLC, we could bet limited to forty?
Along the highway there, not sure. Is there a guard rail protecting against traffic from, you know, like accidents or anything like that? And if not, is there anything proposed?
You mentioned superfund, that on the site? But it's not included in. So you mentioned three areas of this road that curves around and runs through the wetlands that you. Three, three points on which you would impact that. And how, and how will you mitigate damage to the wetlands at those three points? My concern is that you have a smaller impact whether it's a plastic. Oh, let's discuss some of the waivers. So you mentioned about not wanting to have the located utilities. That's waiver one. Okay, and that's what that is probably for going two hundred feet in outside of your. No, just a segment clarification. Waiver two. Since we don't have, like, you know, more specific information as to what you want to do. I think it prudent to have a preliminary that we can discuss recommendations, things that would allow us to. Yes, with no conditions that was kind of a thing. I'll get that. But I'm sorry. Waiver two.
Waiver two. Specific information on building for the, the user, we're, we're not going to have that.
Well, no, we understand about that, with every tenant, but there may be some changes in your designs. There maybe some, some recommendations that we want to have for having to come to a final. You may force us into a situation like the previous, they want to force a vote and we end up with a bunch of conditions. So I'm just trying to head off that. So that's my concern with waiver two. On waiver three, I don't, I don't quite understand the difference between forty five feet and fifty feet. Does fifty feet make that much of a difference?
So if I were to take fifty feet instead of twenty five, what do you see now?
You know, a project this large, I don't see where fifty feet makes that much of a difference, but you're saying it does. Couldn't you, couldn't you incorporate that fifty foot bu- buffer as part of your landscape? So the size of your basin. No, no, I'm saying that the overall size of your base basin has to remain of.
We're, we're. But first, again, I'm thinking, I think we comply with that provision exactly. But said there was eight certain parts, they talked about screen. It said five fifty, fifty particles. Lots of five acres, lots of five acres. Five and four, at some part. Two hundred seventy. We put up screens that we are proposing, we look back here. We have. Even like what that we park around, getting something here. There is live screening, you know. And we're clearly said, three hundred feet. But we still have. Kind of landscaping and space agent. For the area to pass open, they tend, they tend to those types of regulations. That's why we went. This is what the fire and the park. From the side of outside down. Again, so okay, you just don't have it. When you do, you have to decide what. When we just. For willing, for that. Then let me do that. Maybe why is it decided? I can see there's a lot of ways to rotate, second round of reviews and. We are pressed that you're never going to have the same desire. Part. Right. Right. What's. Right.
I'm still concerned about encroachment on wetlands and the protection of the stream. Well, then you're gonna have to address my concerns about waiver three then.
Think even.
Without encroaching on the wetlands. Do you want to come back next month with the redesign plans? Or you're looking for approval tonight? Any?
Change in size. Something such as plan. Back. Here bottom. That under that paper. A lot of hours. Lots of trees. As we commit. Free. Part. Complete. Be. Things. About. It's fine. Fine. I'll. Try. Right. Five.
All right, so you want to withdraw your request for the waiver three?
It's. Well, I it's give and take. I mean, if you withdraw the waiver three, then I'm gonna consider the other stuff.
I have a couple of questions. One, where are the nearest private residence or development of homes? Is that trainer borough? Okay, yeah. And then to the west, there's the Superfund site. And. Is. Then it's other right away, I think for Pico or someone. Yeah.
On the screen. That. I'm. President. Sorry. It's also. One side.
Right.
But it's. It's. Fortunately. I decided. I'm behind.
I did see that.
Part of the surrounding.
Is there a barrier or fence between, or is the Superfund site fenced in? Right? It's the what we call the acid pits, right? Yeah. And. Would it matter if? Right, exactly, yeah. Would it matter if it's fenced or not? Do we need to have a barrier between that site and yours?
Perfect.
And there's no access, no roadways, anything of that nature?
Do you have any other? The. Like township mine, is that a two lane route? Or is just one way, one lane? Have you done a. Um, traffic study or what you what you may expect to be impact to?
Rick. Operating. Respectable level. Forever. They being one of the. By the no buying. Actually, it does require. After we. For example, five. It depose the one. And five worlds. Provide. Fire. We are wide with those. Even though the warrants. But. All of the. From the site access. Second. Project. I would not. Of course, we're going to depend on. So. The. About. The accommodated. At the smothering area. Obviously. I know. Father. Because the second. Traffic. Offsite intersection. Like. We got. Our traffic expert included that there'd be no adverse impact at our site for the surrounding. We are wide.
Just a little point of curiosity. How were you able to do an impact study if you don't have a tenant or tenants? Who do you expect to be your tenant? Tenants? Alex, do you have any other issues or anything?
We talked about. Well. I want to know. I think. We have. Reality. But. I would. I think it's. Spray off the air. Out of it. Everybody. Can't. Can't. For five days. Here. Thank you. Thank you. That was. And I think they. Are. Are. Thank you. And. Drive. Wanting to be anywhere here was pretty good. But I. Yeah, all that. It's already. Yes. It's already. He's got all this area. He's got all training here. And I said that we needed. But. Concern was, you know, one of. Of the advanced. All. With. Then we go back. And. So I think this is great. So. Very happy. I have some. First. With. About. Here. I told you. Did that. But I. Then. Part. Even. When I saw from the fever. Always ready. First. You don't. What. I think it's more that. Like. I'd say. You can. I think. I think. Public. That. I. Say. I think. Well. That's. But. Brad. You wanted to take. Probably on this. I didn't get. And that's. And. I think. It was one. So I don't. Effectively. People. But I thought. Part. I have. Five. So five. Okay, you have to be. Please.
Now you had mentioned additional will complies. Do you have a list of those? Oh. There may have been additional. Well, Alex, should we feel comfortable with not having the Army Corps of Engineers come out or? Should we be comfortable with not having the Army Corps of Engineers come out?
Wait, wait a minute, Alex. Well, since you're not a wetlands expert. And there is a purpose for wetlands mainly mainly is to prevent flooding. So. Yes, but. All the more reason why maybe you should have a. Or.
If it's the area. Like you have a. Those areas. For that. Not really. Where. We're having. Three.
How difficult is it for you to get this jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps?
They don't look at storm. Hey. Not much to be. Try. Even. Better part. But now. Okay, then you have two order letters. Please, Bob, where you. Well, to see, you break the level two. Here. You all. Goodbye. And we'll have to get wetlands crossing time. But there's. It's the. Minor crossing time.
Shall we? Should we vote on each waiver? Guess as we're going along here. Okay. So I mean, we're. So the waivers would be part of the conditions?
These things are in the code for a reason. I'm just a little reluctant to always want to ignore. The requirements. I'm talking about the requirements of five oh five sixteen ten. We're just a little reluctant to want to waive.
This is the one.
And I'm. And I'm reluctant to start a precedence.
Well, it 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 would be if the Army Corps of Engineer. Measured that you had more wetlands than you're calculating. His point.
Then you shouldn't have any problem with Alex's suggestion on the timeline. If you think that they're going to say the same thing that your people said. Again, you're asking us to start a precedence.
Why are you asking for a waiver from them? Is it necessary or no?
What prompted you to include the waiver?
Other comments or? The. Info? So. Is it time to vote? But. That is part of the vote. Okay. All right, motion to approve plans and comment on waivers. We have two waivers left, the first one and the second. Placement utilities and whether or not we want to do. Grant them a fine.
So I'll make a motion to approve preliminary fine. And as well as make. The not needing to delineate two hundred feet for their utilities.
A second.
I'm sorry, include the final two? Got it.
Nice, second.
Okay, so. Let me roll call for George.
Should be trying. I, um. I'm in agreement. No?
Uh, yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
All. The Board of Commissioners, currently you have. Board has a timeline that I found within the. That would mean that. We'll be giving presentation at the August fourth Board of Commissioners meeting. And seeking approval to resolution for the eleven. I will tell you that typically the board for the presentation does not have a single. Much of the final iteration of the plan. And there was some discussion tonight about including. Um, some items with that. So if you don't feel you'd be able to get that together by the fourth, then they need an additional extension. September.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for your talk. Thank you.
Okay, next order on the item on the agenda is the proposed zoning map amendment.
Good evening. Uh, so the board, uh, the planning commission has been provided pursuant to the municipal planning code. A copy of a proposed ordinance, uh, amending the zoning map of Upper Chichester Township. The, uh, included with the ordinance is the cross sections of the map that are being suggested. Changed. Uh, we are required to give this to the municipal planning commission thirty days prior to a hearing. It is the intent of the Board of Commissioners to advertise. Doing for. September. September eighth, two thousand twenty-two. A brief recap of what this is is annually we go through the zoning code. We love to see if there's any kind of. Things that come up with like discrepancies, uh, including, let's say, the, uh. One vacation is. You know, ten or fifteen separate parcels. Some of those parcels. And some of those parcels, is any difference, any rest of parcels, to clean them up. Um, so that is the example. Um, existing zoning map that you see here for, uh, the parcel folios, uh, zero nine, one, five, and there's six, zero, zero, one, or seven, zero, zero. Those are two parcels included in one property, which are currently zoned R two. Second item you have is, uh, directly across the, the CSX bridge out of the Beuthling Town Center in Beuthling Heights. Currently, the zoning of those properties is industrial, includes the property effectively known as the Kingsman Avenue Park, as well as parcel folios, zero nine. Uh, two, one, zero, three, zero, 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 one, zero, nine, two, one, zero, three, zero, 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 two, zero, nine, two, one, zero, three, zero, 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 three. Those are all, um, properties that are, you know, currently not included in the industrial zone, and the adjacent zones to that were C one, the proposal is to choose the zoning proceeding. Next parcel you have, uh, we call the Reliance Chicken Ladder Company number one. Over the past couple of years, the parcels on Chigester Avenue roughly located in the vicinity of Mill Road, you can rezone them by the, uh, the committee commissioners. Those parcels, uh, were all split zone parcels, where the front parcel, front portion of the parcel is Z one, back portion of the property is residential. Uh, this would be rezoning parcel folio zero, nine, two, one, zero, seven, zero, and it's currently R two, to propose, uh, Z one. Uh, the current use as a, uh, fire company is a food system non-controlling use. So that, uh, this, that is, uh, what's been being presented, uh, this is more than thirty days prior to the beginning of the day, so we are, again, the next month as well. Comments, questions, that's, we'll be, we'll discuss it at that point, and it's also been sent to the Delaware County Planning Commission, for their review at the August meeting, and they're issuing, uh. Leave on Monday, the advertisements will go to the times. Second property.
Thank you, George. All right, next item on the agenda, Art and Soul Update.
So the Art and Soul update is that they are currently still working on the community action plan, as well as the, uh, legacy organization.
Thank you. Okay, other, anybody have any thing to bring before the board? Okay, any general public comments? All right, I guess I should ask for a motion to adjourn.
Let's see.
Your second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.